So we have a quorum and it's five after. We're still, I think, potentially waiting on Gail, but we will go ahead and get started if that works for everyone. Welcome. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We'll call the meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is to review ZDO 269 regarding accessory dwelling units. But we always start these hearings with an opportunity for public comment. It's an opportunity to testify or bring anything to our attention that is not currently on the agenda. And so if anyone in the audience is interested in addressing the commission, now is a great time to do that. Come on up. Just a reminder that it is for items not on the agenda tonight. There will be an opportunity to provide testimony on ZDO 269 in a bit. For anyone testifying tonight, you do not have to share your specific address, but it is helpful to us to know the general city or area that you live in, just to give us some context of where you're coming from. So, welcome. Please state your name and for the record.
My name is Grover Bornfeld, and I live in Jennings Lodge, which is unincorporated at Clackamas County in the urban area. And while I'm not -- your broad topic is accessory dwellings, which is what I want to talk about, but ZDO 269 is not what I want to talk about. So I have a great concern when I read articles that tell me that 40% of the population in our metropolitan area cannot afford a one-bedroom apartment. And I don't think we, as a county, and I am a major advocate for Clackamas County, and I am thrilled in many of the directions that Clackamas County is moving to have more citizen involvement, et cetera. However, I don't think we're moving fast enough, nor is anyone really. So my concern is the restrictions to build an ADU under the current county requirements and all the service development charges, contrasted with what they've done in Portland, where they waived the system of development charges. To build a 720-square-foot ADU where I live would cost, in permits and SDCs, over $20,000. So you start doing the math, and it's hard to justify doing that, and I would love to do it. I have enough property to do it, but the costs are prohibitive. And so I'd have us -- I'd really like to advocate that we consider how many people -- we have a 3% vacancy rate, is the last figure I heard, so we don't have enough stock. And then even if someone did build an ADU and charge market rate, it still would add to the inventory, which would eventually begin to create some relief for the people who have financial issues. So I don't think we're looking at that perspective, so that's what I want to say and address here, and that's pretty much my message, is that I appreciate the work you're doing, and I'm not affected by your particular ZDO tonight, and so I probably will be not going to stay the whole time, but I want to speak to -- we need to do things that are broader and more, I would say, aggressive -- careful of those words -- but in addressing the issue that faces us, and it isn't just us. It's the whole area, but we're not even close. 3% vacancy and 40% of our population can't afford a one-bedroom apartment. We're not meeting those, and if you read the bigger picture, like of the comprehensive plan, et cetera, plus the state mandate, we're supposed to keep up with housing, and we're not. And I think our existing restrictions are an impediment.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you all for the work you do.
Yeah, thank you.
I know you get paid big bucks, right?
Is there anyone else who would like to testify on anything not on our agenda tonight? Okay. We will move forward. So we are going to move into the public hearing section of our meeting. One of the most important responsibilities of the chair of this commission is to read from and not stray from the script that has been provided me to me by the staff, so we're going to continue to do that. Appreciate people bearing with me. So we are now opening the public hearing for consideration of ZDO 269, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance. The planning commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record for this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision in the matter. The Board will conduct another hearing on this application on August 1st, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. The hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew, and additional testimony may be offered at that time. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10 p.m. If not concluded, it will continue for -- to be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. So the way this public hearing will be conducted tonight is as follows. Number one, the Planning and Zoning Division will provide a staff report. There will be entry into the record of any additional correspondence received. Technical information from -- will be received from government agencies. Testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations, hamlets or villages will be heard. Testimony by any other persons, with a maximum length of three minutes per speaker. Closing of the public hearing, and then the planning commission will discuss and take action. If you wish to speak tonight, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the administrative assistant, Darcy, here. Please state your name and where you're from, or where you're -- who are you representing for the record when you come to the testimony table. So with that, we introduce Glenn, for I believe this is the first time you're presenting a report to us tonight.
Yep.
So we'll let you take it away with the staff report. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Glenn Hamburg, and I think for all of you, or for most of you, I'll be a fresh face. I'm a planner two with the county. I started, as of next week, two years ago, and under the expert tutelage of Senior Planner Martha Fritzi, I'll be presenting on the staff report with the recommendations that we have for ZDO 269. Before I get into that, I'll just draw your attention to three separate things that we've placed before you to start the meeting. One of them is just a copy of the PowerPoint that you'll be seeing, of course. Another is, it looks like this, it's Attachment A. This is some paperwork that we intended to include with your packet that we didn't. It was, however, included with the documents posted online for the public, and specifically it's the proposed amendments to Chapters Four and Six of the Comprehensive Plan. We provided you the ZDO amendments in your packet, but we left these out. Nonetheless, as I say, they are provided to the public, and we addressed them in the staff report. Finally, we received just one piece of written testimony, and that showed up just a couple days ago, so we'll be submitting it as Exhibit One. Without further ado, I'll be happy to share what ZDO 269 is about. Broadly, we're calling it accessory dwelling units, but only for the title slide and for the title of this ordinance. I want to be very careful about this term and how we use it with relation to the policies we're proposing. See if this works. Specifically, as the chair mentioned, these are proposed legislative amendments to the county's comprehensive plan, as well as the zoning and development ordinance. And these proposals are, taken together, intended to expand opportunities for accessory dwellings. Some of this proposal is in response to a state mandate, and we'll talk about that. But essentially, it's a state mandate to -- for the county to allow accessory dwelling units in certain locations where we don't already. As part of this package, the county is also proposing that, by our own choice, we also allow ADUs in some other locations that aren't mandated by the state. Now, separate from those ADU provision expansions, we're also proposing to take advantage of a new state option that came before the county, and that is to allow something that is sort of like an ADU, but we're going to refer to it as something different. And this would be on properties that are not included in those first two items mentioned above. So again, that'll be addressed in greater specificity in the following slides. As part of this ADU package, though, we're also proposing some general amendments that will provide more clarity and consistency to those existing regulations. So that's sort of what's going on in a nutshell. A little bit of background that might help to understand these proposed amendments. First, what is an accessory dwelling unit? And this is where I'd like to transition to using the term ADU as a very specific thing. As we define accessory dwelling units right now in the zoning and development ordinance, this is a fully separate dwelling. An ADU is different from a guest house or a studio in that it is a fully separate dwelling. It will have its own kitchen and may have its own laundry facilities, and could be rented out entirely to somebody else as a private dwelling. That's not the case for studios and guest houses, which are sort of just detached living spaces that are not meant for ongoing habitation. So right now, we, as the county, allow one ADU per lot of record only in our urban, single-family residential zones, and we also allow it in one of the residential zones up in the Mount Hood area. That's the HR zone, Hoodland Residential. Interestingly, we don't allow ADUs at this time in the MRR zone. That's the Mountain Recreational Resort Zone that's also up in Mount Hood, even though there are some similarities between the MRR zone and the HR zone that I'll point out. The standards for this ADU will depend on the ADU's location under current rules. So current rules have square footage maximums for ADUs, for example, and some of those maximums differ depending on which zone the ADU is in. Importantly, we don't have many standards for ADUs in the HR zone up in the Mount Hood area, including square footage limitations. We'll talk about that some more as well. Right now, we also don't allow manufactured dwellings to be used as ADUs. And the recent legislation that I'll draw next is, as I said, requires that we expand the areas where we allow accessory dwelling units, these specific type of dwellings. Importantly, the legislation also requires that we move from just allowing one accessory dwelling unit per lot of record to allowing for a one accessory dwelling unit per legal dwelling. So if there's a lot of record with more than one legal primary dwelling, there's the potential for more than one accessory dwelling unit. That's part of the state mandate. This mandate comes from two pieces of legislation, one Senate bill and one House bill, the House bill amending what was previously adopted. And taken all together, this mandates that Clackamas County allow accessory dwelling units, one per legal dwelling, in all zones inside of an urban growth boundary, whether it's the metro's urban growth boundary or one of our cities, where single detached single-family housing is an outright permitted use. And the state does allow us to apply reasonable siting and design regulations, but we have to allow it. Entirely separate from this is a new option that the legislature gave the county, and that's in House Bill 3012. This is an option for the county to allow a different type of accessory dwelling. We're calling them accessory historic dwellings in areas that are outside of a UGB and also outside of any urban reserve. So this is considering an entirely different portion of the county than the ADU provisions. These accessory historic dwellings that I'll describe in more detail would be only allowed in those zones, again, where single detached, single-family housing is an outright permitted use. And it will allow an accessory dwelling that has been converted from an older home, specifically a home that was built between 1850 and 1945. You could convert that older home to an accessory dwelling at the same time that you build a new primary dwelling on the same lot of record. One of the conditions of this that the state requires if we choose to implement this option is that the lot of record be at least two acres in size. More on that to come. We've decided to sort of group all these various proposals into five different, for lack of a better term, chunks. Proposal one, chunk number one, and this is how it's outlined in the staff report as well, is the staff's recommendation to implement the state's mandate. And to do that, to amend the zoning and development ordinance, as well as relevant portions of the comp plan, to specifically allow one accessory dwelling unit per detached, single-family or manufactured dwelling on the lot of record. Again, this would only be allowed within urban growth boundaries and only in those zones where detached, single-family housing is already an outright permitted use. And those zones would be the FF-10, FU-10, RA-1, RA-2, and RRFF-5 zones only, in addition to where they already are permitted, in the urban low-density residential zones. Staff is also proposing that these new ADUs, or these new areas where ADUs be allowed, those ADUs be subject to the same ADU standards that we have in Section 839 of the Development Code right now. Those standards include a maximum of 720 square feet for the ADU. That's square footage limitation that doesn't apply to some other zones, but we're proposing this being the general norm applied to these new ADUs as well. There are some general standards for where an entrance to an attached ADU has to be, for example. And 839 also includes an owner occupancy requirement, and we're going to -- I've highlighted that purple because we're going to be talking about it later. But right now, the code requires that any ADU, except for ADUs in certain zones, that the property owner either reside in the primary dwelling or the ADU. They can't rent out both separately. That's the way 839 reads right now, and that's the rule that applies to most, but not all Staff is also proposing that we allow manufactured dwellings to be used as ADUs, but only in four specific zones. It's in the FF-10, RA-1, RA-2, and RRFF-5 zones. The reason why we've selected these zones is because manufactured homes in the other urban low-density residential zones and rural residential zones have manufactured dwelling square footage minimums that are higher than what we would for an ADU, so that just wouldn't be possible. However, in these zones, if somebody were able to propose a manufactured home that was at least 700 square feet, but no more than 720, we're proposing that we would allow Here, and I hope that you can see it in the monitor in front of you, is a map of, just to indicate the general area where these ADU provisions would apply. Important note of caution that this isn't an indication of precisely where there are properties that absolutely can get an ADU, but the yellow will show those zones that we're proposing as the state mandates to allow ADUs. They are zones that are inside of an urban growth boundary. Staff estimates that there's approximately 4,000 tax lots that meet the zoning criteria. Approximately 55% to 60% of these are actually up in the Damascus area, up in the central north of the map. Also part of this proposal is a recommendation that we require ADUs up in the HR zone near Mount Hood, where they're already permitted, to be subject to the same 839 development standards as ADUs in the urban low-density residential zones. Right now, the HR zone, as I think I mentioned, has no square footage limitation on ADUs. There's no owner occupancy requirement. We're proposing that those requirements be applied to the HR zone, like every other zone. We're also proposing that we allow ADUs in the MRR zone up in Mount Hood. The MRR zone allows detached, single-family dwellings already right now, and so, given that that area is -- has a little bit more of an urban character, and there are somewhat more widespread urban services available, piped water and sewer, for example, we're proposing that ADUs be allowed in this district as well. Importantly, subject to 839. Third, the proposal recommends that we adopt the state's option for allowing accessory historic dwellings. As we would be required by the legislation, if we adopted this option, an accessory historic dwelling would only be allowed outside of a UGB and outside of an urban reserve, and only in these zones that I've listed up here. These are all zones where detached, single-family housing is permitted. It does not include, for example, the exclusive farm use zone, the timber zone, or any of those resource zones. We're also proposing that these new types of dwellings, accessory historic dwellings, be regulated by a new zoning and development ordinance section, Section 843. And it's in that new section that we propose to adopt the conditions for these homes that the relevant legislation puts out there. One of those conditions is that the lot of record be at least two acres in size, that the historic dwelling be built between 1850 and 1945, and you can convert that structure into an accessory structure only when you build a new, single-family residence on the property or cite a manufactured home anew on the same property. The legislation would allow the accessory historic dwelling to be renovated, and you can even increase its size, but only up to 120% of the size it was when the new home on the same property started construction. Importantly, the accessory historic dwelling cannot be replaced according to the state legislation if it was destroyed. Here's another, I hope, helpful map. You can sort of see some yellow colorings throughout. There's approximately 800 tax lots that we found would -- are of the right size, zoning designation, location with respect to an urban growth boundary, and potentially a home of the appropriate age. So 800 tax lots that might qualify for this provision. Keep in mind, they only get to convert the accessory historic dwelling if they also create a new, single-family dwelling on the same lot. So whether all 800 of these properties would endeavor to do that, who knows? The package of proposals also recommends that we repeal the owner occupancy requirement. As I mentioned before, this owner occupancy requirement is only applicable to certain ADUs in certain zones. We're recommending that we remove the requirement for reasons that I'll mention here shortly. We're proposing some conforming amendments to the ZDO, actually, as well as to the comprehensive plan as well. And I think now's a good time to sort of brainstorm what might be some significant issues. As far as the owner occupancy requirement, again, it's a requirement that the property owner either live in the primary dwelling or in the accessory dwelling, and it's only in the urban low-density residential zones, but not in Sunnyside Village or up in Mount Thinking about this, some might think that this is unfair, that there might be some questions of equity, that why do we have this requirement in some areas and not in others? Some might see allowing or removing the owner occupancy requirement as an opportunity to provide more rental options. If you could rent out both structures, there's more rental stock. I think that it's fair to say that it can be difficult to enforce the owner occupancy requirement. Yes, we make them sign a deed restriction before we sign the building permit for the ADU, but after that, it's hard to know whether or not it's actually being lived up to. Some concerns about removing the owner occupancy requirements might be how the absent landlord effect might impact the character of the neighborhood. You know, does some -- not having the property owner nearby mean anything positive or negative for the property and for the neighborhood? We've also heard it expressed that the owner occupancy requirement may be a barrier to developing an ADU. Maybe somebody wants to build an ADU on their property but doesn't actually want to live there themselves, so they might decide to just not build the ADU at all. However, at least here at Clackamas County, we don't have actual figures to back that up of the number of people who decided or wanted to do it but decided not to because they can't. So it's unknown whether or not this is really a significant barrier. Significant issues as far as the accessory historic dwelling provisions, I'll remind that this is only an option. You don't have to implement this legislation if you don't want to. But if you do, it's -- there are some state mandated conditions that I outlined. We can only be so unique with it. Some considerations, the measure might help to preserve some older homes in the county, and that might be perceived as a benefit, retaining some historical character to certain areas, et cetera. Allowing for more housing on the applicable properties might, again, increase the rental housing stock. It also would provide an option for family members to continue to reside on a property while some other family members are living in another dwelling, this time on a permanent basis, as opposed to the temporary dwelling-for-care system that's out there as well. However, there might be questions about fairness and inequity in this proposal. Here, we're allowing -- considering allowing property owners who already have a dwelling built between 1850 and 1945 to have a second dwelling, whereas properties that don't already have that, you know, if they have only a 1946 home, they will not be able to take advantage of this policy. So that might be perceived as fair and inequitable.
Why the cutoff at 1945?
Oh, I was hoping somebody would ask that question, so I can admit that we have no idea. Fun fact, the legislation, it looks like it started with 1950, and then somebody changed it to 1945 along the way. Can't understand why. I today actually looked back to see if in the legislative record there was some indication of why this policy specifically was put out there and why these specific dates. The best that I can find was support for expanding of housing and the preservation of historic homes, pre-war housing specifically.
Post-war boom, there's way more of it. It was probably double the, you know what I mean?
I think that that's likely, yeah.
So by this, though, it's take it or leave it, 1945 or nothing?
Correct.
And when you described, just to make sure I heard you right and I read it right, if they take advantage of this and they have a 1945 home and they build a McMansion, and one of those homes burns down after this, they don't get to build it back?
They cannot, if it's the accessory historic dwelling that burns down, they cannot build it back. If the primary dwelling were to be burned down, they could build it back.
And just to clarify as well, it's not technically a McMansion because it's restricted to 120% the square footage of the existing homes?
No. The primary dwelling could be a McMansion, or it could be of any size, but the 120% relates to the accessory historic dwelling.
Okay.
So you can have the old structure, you can renovate it, and you can even increase its size, but no more than 120 square feet of its size at the time the new home started being built.
And I kid when I say McMansion, really, there's no bias, there's just what I'm sure is going to occur.
So the provision for the -- for not being able to rebuild if the existing older home burns down, that's part of the take it or leave it package? If you select this option, that must be in it?
Yep. In fact, all of these kind of unique bits about the accessory historic dwelling proposal are all state-required bits with the option.
So all or nothing?
Yep.
So there's no staff portion that's been added or changed from that list?
I can't think of anything more specific that we've added, no.
Decided not to be more restrictive.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on these dates, was the 1850, did that have to do something with statehood?
I've said all I know about why they chose those dates. If you guys find out, we'd be curious. We attempted to contact -- We attempted to contact, we did contact the legislative offices, but haven't heard back.
One more question, then we'll let him finish.
Oh, if he's presenting, I'll hold it.
Sure, so those are just some of the significant issues about these policies that we thought could use some discussion here. Ultimately, though, staff finds that this proposal, all of these proposed amendments, comply with applicable state, regional, and local criteria, and staff recommends approval of ZDO two sixty-nine as we've proposed it here in this packet. And with that, that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Glenn, great job. Mark, do you have questions?
So MAC seven twenty, take it or leave it, or is there options for other things with that?
That's a figure that the county can choose.
All right. When you were talking about manufactured homes, there's a hot trend right now with tiny homes, which would typically be underneath that seven hundred figure. They're not DOT-approved homes, so they don't qualify as. So where do those fit within this, that trend of pre-built, you know, small housing?
Nothing less than seven hundred and twenty square feet would be permitted by these changes.
Can we allow for smaller?
Nothing more than seven hundred and twenty square feet, and no manufactured dwelling smaller than seven hundred square feet.
And, and is that a take it or leave it from the state law? Or is there deference to the county to allow for more flexibility on that, given how popular those are?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I don't know what is the smallest manufactured dwelling that the state will license.
Well, they're, they're not manufactured homes, but they're legal, right? Like, there's a gray area they fit within, because, I mean, they're doing trade shows and all kinds of stuff for them now.
Well, I could, I could say some things on this topic, but stop me if you have something better to explain, that we get a lot of questions about tiny houses. Tiny houses are not a regulatory thing as we look at them. Something's either a stick-built home, or it's a manufactured dwelling. Or an RV. If it's on wheels, moving up and down the highway, it has to be licensed. We don't know what minimum requirements there are for that at the state level.
Well, it's a DOT trailer, and they build it upon it, and it, it's within a gray area, but it is today. And if you're looking at this code, and we're talking about housing, there'd be no better time than now to figure out if you're going to allow some process for that, because that is a really big thing right now. And we just allowed for ten by twenty tiny homes to be built under our code for homeless people. So if we're going to allow it for the county to basically, you know, move the ruler, I would highly recommend staff figure something out, because you're going to be asked a lot. And if you talk about equity, it's one thing of, okay, I got to live in my house, or don't to rent it. It's something completely different of, this could work, and you just told me it can't, and it doesn't make any sense, and they could do it in other states.
So can I just jump in here? Tiny homes have different meaning and different building code issues. So as far as we're concerned in planning, if you can stick-build a tiny home, convert an old shed or what have you, and meet current building codes, you can use it as an ADU. If it's four hundred square feet, that's fine, if that's what you want. You have to meet current building codes. And my understanding is that this, at the state level, they've made some adjustments to building codes to, to make tiny homes a little bit easier to fit into the current building codes. But there are still some, some issues, and one of the things was having loft bedrooms. They've now allowed, they have codes for ladders and sleeping in loft bedrooms. So you're currently allowed to do that. The other type of tiny homes that we see sometimes on wheels used to be licensed as RVs. Those were only allowed where you could use an RV. An accessory dwelling unit can't be an RV. It needs to either be a stick-built home, or in this one, in this new instance, you could use a manufactured dwelling, an actual manufactured home as a, an ADU. The reason for the minimum seven hundred square feet is that our current code allows, in the urban area and the urban zones, manufactured homes as, as dwellings, but only if they are larger than a thousand square feet. But it allows manufactured homes as dwellings in the rural residential zones, which is what we're talking about, if it's a minimum of seven hundred square feet. And so we decided to allow them as accessory dwelling units. Currently, manufactured homes are not allowed at all as accessory structures, for any kind of accessory structure. But we weren't going to go down the road of, of the code amendments and the rationale behind those specific size limitations. And, I mean, that's a much bigger conversation that involves more zones and changing more codes, and we could perhaps think about that moving forward, if we want to see more manufactured homes. But it still wouldn't apply to those tiny homes on wheels. Those are not manufactured homes.
Unless they qualify as a...
Unless they qualify, right.
So it's the opinion of staff, if they qualify as a manufactured home, you'd accept them. So I would ask, as somebody, would you be, consider reducing your, you know, and then put in that they must meet the manufact, where you already have the manufacturing? So I'd, I'd drop that seven hundred down, given where trends are at, you know, the public interest in that.
Well, and that's something that we can discuss. I'm not sure it's necessarily part of this package, but as we go through our ongoing audit of different sections of our ordinance, we're, we're going to come, we're going to work on the manufactured dwelling section.
And that's the only ADU out there with, like, twenty shows on cable right now. I mean, I'm just going to tell you, I kind of look at that, if that's an option for us, I'd, I don't know if they're, like, three hundred square feet or four hundred, what, what the, like, four hundred?
Four hundred is very common.
Are you seeing those in, in your neck of the woods?
I've done some research on it on my own.
You're not seeing people requesting them, though?
There are some, but it is rather new in Gresham as well.
Yeah.
We have had several with special review come in in order to have tiny homes, but there's a special review process set up for that. So yes, there are, there is definitely interest.
Christine?
I have a question kind of in the opposite direction. From seven hundred to seven hundred and twenty square feet, is that your standard, the size of a standard, single-wide mobile home right now?
In the relevant zones that we're proposing to allow manufactured homes as ADUs, the minimum size for a manufactured dwelling is already seven hundred square feet for a primary dwelling. So we're just proposing to apply that same minimum to an accessory dwelling in those zones. However, the cap on seven hundred and twenty square feet for ADUs that we have in these other zones, we also want to apply, so that just creates this twenty-foot, square-foot option range.
I was just confirming that, like, if somebody goes to a manufactured home lot right now, and they say, I want to meet these standards, they can pick out some manufactured home that's currently on the lot to meet these standards?
That's what we're assuming is...
This is a normal size.
Yep. As long as they can get a licensed manufactured dwelling that's within this square-footage limitation, we would, are proposing to allow it as an accessory dwelling.
What was, what was the rationale of setting the maximum at seven twenty?
Good question. We actually thought of that question right before this hearing, because we noticed in another jurisdiction that they also use the seven hundred and twenty figure, and I wonder if it's just a remnant of a prior building code regulation?
But that's something that's been in our ordinance since we allowed accessory dwelling units in the urban residential, in the, the urban low-density, single-family residential zones back in, like, I want to say ninety-seven-ish, late nineties. That was the maximum size, and it seems to have worked for us. It's never seemed to cause a problem, and so we just decided to apply the same standards. Certainly, if we were going to try to make it smaller, it would be more restrictive, and it could potentially cause angst. We, at this point, didn't contemplate making it any larger, because there didn't seem to be a need.
And I might just add to that. One concern is we don't, we probably don't want to allow ADUs within urban growth boundaries that might be larger than cities will themselves allow for ADUs once those same properties in their UGBs is annexed. So, for example, right now, the city of Estacada allows nine hundred square-foot ADUs within its city limits. If we were to allow accessory dwelling units that are a thousand square feet, ultimately, the city of Estacada might be inheriting property with ADUs that are larger than what they would otherwise allow.
But wouldn't those be grandfathered in?
They would be grandfathered in, and they would still be legal. But they would, the city could end up with ADUs that are larger than they would otherwise have hoped for. So having something that's not any larger than what the cities in the county already allow might be important.
You really think Estacada's keeping that score? I mean...
Well, I'm the planning director for the city of Estacada, and the answer is yes.
The whole city is like, I don't know, that guy's got two hundred extra feet of spare bedroom over there. I don't know, I feel, you really think that's a major issue?
Well, there is no major issue related to ADUs just yet, because they just legalized it.
So I want to follow up on the minimum size for the manufactured dwellings. So the seven hundred square feet, can you just confirm that came from the minimum size for a primary dwelling?
A manufactured dwelling? In, in those applicable zones, correct?
So it would make sense to me to allow, as an accessory dwelling, to have a minimum that is less than the primary. And the, the tiny homes, they, the manufactured ones don't necessarily have to come on wheels. There are quite a lot that are just manufactured, delivered on wheels, but put down on a foundation like a typical manufactured home, not mobile home. So I would definitely want to see those included in whatever goes forward.
Are there any other questions for staff before we move on to public testimony? We'll obviously have an opportunity to discuss this later.
I did have a few questions on the historic dwellings.
Go ahead.
So, let's see. So Glenn, these are what I was emailing with you before, but I'd like to ask now, so that it's on the rest, the record. For those existing homes between eighteen fifty and nineteen forty-five, can you describe what sort of protections are in place for historic properties, undesignated or designated?
Sure. I should be clear that this, as we're using it in this accessory dwelling context, and specifically for this use, the term historic only has a relation to this date range. It does not relate to designated historic landmarks, goal five items in our comp plan, that kind of thing. There, and so, a home might be built in nineteen oh-two, and for the sake of this ordinance, it'd be considered an accessory historic dwelling, or could be converted to that, but may not have any actual historic landmark designation. However, if by chance the structure did, in most, but not all cases, the historic landmark overlay applies to the entire property. And right now, the code would require that a new primary dwelling built on that lot would need to be reviewed as a type-two process to make sure that this new primary dwelling isn't hiding or taking away from, in some way, the historic nature, you know, the, the historic structure there that's also on the same property. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, my concern here is that, I think that the proposal is definitely great in that it helps to encourage the preservation of historic structures, or just older structures as well. However, my concerns would be where there are historically significant or eligible properties that are not designated, that there might be able to be some provision to allow for some consideration of the citing of the new structure to help maintain the significance for the historically eligible property.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. We don't have anything in this proposal that would apply to properties that aren't yet historically designated. But there are existing provisions that would require review for the citing of new structures on historically designated parcels, as well as to alterations of actual historically designated landmarks themselves, too.
I, I just want to make sure I understand. Accessory dwelling unit. They have their own utilities, they have their own hookups, they don't share, like, in a rural area, a well with the primary. They have to have their own well. Am I correct in that assumption?
It's my, I'm not aware of an accessory dwelling unit needing to have its own well, just as long as it's a legal water source. Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Great. So now I need to ask, have we had, have we received any correspondence on this matter, other than what is in our packet?
Just the one exhibit, exhibit one.
Susan? Thank you.
It was submitted on June twenty-first.
And then have we received any other government, any, oh, are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to this proposal? I'm seeing none, right? Good. I don't think so. Awesome. So we can move forward then to the public testimony section. Are there any representatives of community planning organizations, hamlets, or villages here tonight? One. Come on up, would you like to testify?
Not in that capacity.
Great. So there's no hamlet or village interested in testifying, so that we can move on to, does any person wish to speak on this proposal? I have one card from Jean Zuber. Jean, if you want to...
Joan Zuber.
Excuse me?
Joan.
Joan, okay, I will read that correctly. Joan, if you want to come on up, if anyone else would like to testify, you can let Darcy know, or fill out one of the cards behind you, and we would, we would welcome your participation. So for those speaking, we generally give people three minutes. We can be, we don't have that many people here tonight, so we can be a little bit flexible, but please keep your comments brief, and go ahead, go ahead with your name and where you live.
My name is Joan Zuber, and I live in the very far southern part of Clackamas County in a timber zone. I'm actually the vice chair of the South Clackamas CPO, but the chair and I did not actually find out about this until a week ago, when we were at the, at the leaders' meeting and dinner. So I, so we didn't have time to call, you know, give notice for a meeting, and so, I'm officially not representing the CPO, but I share the views with many people that are in it. I think the thing, I've been involved with land use planning since Senate Bill one hundred, and I feel a little bit betrayed by this, because if I'm living in a zone, and that zone is, like, say, a two-acre zone, I, you know, I can't see doubling, possibly doubling the population and having that many more houses. Perhaps maybe the zoning should be changed, instead of just allowing this for whoever wants it. And I don't see how it would have anything to do with making anything more affordable, because I think that once these are built, I think that, you know, there's taxes and everything else that goes along with it. I don't think that they're going to be renting for a lower price than, what, forty percent of the people have a problem with. And then in these, the areas where a house could be built, and then you would have the historic house, you know, there's some areas, and I'm somewhat familiar around Molalla. South of Molalla, there is a area that is limited water, and houses are to be on, like, a five-acre parcel, you know, for, to keep the number of wells from draining the aquifer even further. And if, if you have somebody in that area that wants to build a house and keep the other one, then I'm sure you'd have to have a separate septic tank, and would they have to drill a well? And they're not, and then they wouldn't have the five-acre minimum. So I think it's fairly complex, this, this whole idea. So, anyway, that's what I have to say on the subject.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Joan? Thank you so much.
All right.
I have Grover...
Oh, I have one more thing, is I understand that just because of the state mandate, that the county can actually be more restrictive than what is mandated.
I don't think so.
There you go.
Grover? Grover?
My name is Grover Bornfeld and I live in Jennings Lodge. And the reason I wanted to speak was I really appreciated what Mark had to say about tiny homes. So I did a little quick research and tiny homes are a hundred and sixty square feet. It's called a tiny home. And they're, they are made, they, they meet all kinds of requirements. So I also am concerned, given that the legislation from the, um, state did have much more than what they required to be in compliance. They did say eight to nine hundred square feet is what they recommended for ADUs. I appreciate history at seven hundred and twenty, but I don't see any justification for seven hundred and twenty. And secondarily, they also talked about waiving SDCs, things to lower the cost to make it more able for, uh, structures to be built. And because they need to focus on things that will increase the inventory because we have a significant, almost emergency level, um, housing shortage. So the costs, the added costs for smaller, because it's always been that way, is it doesn't fit for me. And I really appreciated what Mark had to say, that why seven hundred? I appreciated your rationale, but I don't think it addresses what the intent. If you read what the state mandated, yes, but they had several other pages of things they wanted to encourage. They didn't mandate it, but they did want to encourage for the purpose of addressing the housing shortage. So I appreciated your comment about the hundred and sixty square feet because there are. It is a big deal about tiny homes and that we would come up with a standard that isn't even close to the tiny homes. So they're still not allowed, allowed in our, in our, uh, jurisdiction.
I, I think they established they were allowed. There were just certain rules.
It has to be code.
And they weren't just completely up on it when I was firing questions at them. So I, I got the impression that they were allowed.
Allowed? A hundred and sixty square foot tiny home?
As long as they meet building code requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
The stick-built, onsite stick-built.
Or has to be onsite.
If something's a manufactured dwelling, um, it would need to be at least seven hundred square feet.
Well, I need to challenge that because I, I've been looking into stuff and you can actually have all the walls built elsewhere, bring them in and assemble it onsite.
Well, that, that's prefab though, which is meets the stick-built standard.
Okay, good.
Prefab.
So then if you did all of that and brought the whole thing in and set it down, where's the line between stick-built and being, uh, manufactured?
We have a specific definition of manufactured dwellings in the ZDO, um, and so this would rely on that same definition. Um, just require that those types of dwellings be at least seven hundred square feet.
Just correct. So we have a code for how something will be built. When it is inspected, that's the code that they're meeting. You can pre-manu, you can prefab it and then assemble it or brought, but it, it meets that code of how it's put together with what standards. You know what I mean? For, that, that's what they're, and the difference is you have different development codes for a manufactured home, which is DOT, right? Department of Transportation, because it's got wheels and you could move it.
Right, but this isn't, isn't that, the hundred and sixty, they put it on a trailer, they bring it here and they set it on a foundation.
Is a manufactured home not a mobile home?
They're two different things.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I don't even know what I'm talking about. I should be quiet.
The manufactured home is put on the trailer that has wheels and then transported and placed onsite without wheels.
Which then further brings your point up, is they will not allow a manufactured home less than seven hundred square feet. And if the issue is to create more housing, I don't understand the rationale for the seven hundred square foot because that's required elsewhere for other things, but that doesn't meet what the intent of the legislature is.
But you can build a stick-built home to that dimension, same as you would. The only difference is, is the commitment to it being attached to a foundation. I don't think that's too big of a hurdle.
Well, no, but it can't be an ADU. Can, can you have an ADU that's on-
No, not, not if it's on a trailer. That's all they're saying is I-
It sounds like the, if it's completely manufactured offsite and brought in, whether it's on a trailer or sitting on something that has wheels or has wheels itself is the distinction. So the, the line between manufactured home and prefab or stick-built, there's different building codes which you would follow to show that it meets building code. So that would be determined based on what code that structure followed. But the distinction here is the seven hundred square foot minimum applies for those completely manufactured offsite and brought in and put on a foundation. And there are many tiny homes done that way.
Okay, and so a hundred and sixty square foot tiny home could qualify and it's, as an ADU?
If it is stick-built onsite, yes, but under this proposal, if it's completely manufactured offsite and brought in, it has to be the minimum seven hundred. That's what's, that's what the proposal is.
That's my point. So they're excluded in, in, given what you said, you said, and what you said. A hundred and sixty square foot tiny home, even if it meets code, cannot be brought onto a piece of property because it doesn't meet your, what you're proposing, which is not in the state mandate, what you're proposing is the seven hundred square foot limitation. That's not in any of the state requirements.
I can't, uh, answer that completely because I don't know what the minimum standards are of the state for licensing a manufactured home. I don't know how small the state would allow a manufactured home to be or, um, uh, uh, the federal government either, so.
So I'm with you, but in staff's defense, they don't know. My impression is they don't. And you could still get the tiny home. You just have to basically make sure that you're building it onsite, which I don't think is a bad idea because we don't want a whole bunch of trailers parked all over the place.
No, I agree about the trailer part, but having it delivered, because most of the manufactured homes, they talk about bringing in a crane and moving it in place.
But that still may, if they're, if they're basically pouring a foundation, they're doing it and they're finishing onsite, that still may qualify as stick-built. You know, it, it, you know, my, my impression is that they're hitting it, I, you know.
Manufactured homes come in and get placed on a foundation that's built onsite. So why would a tiny home that comes in complete-
Because you'd, you'd finish it.
Placed on a foundation onsite.
But you'd finish it on site. So if, basically the factory builds it to a certain degree.
You put the door on when you bring it home.
And, well, you've got more than that though, but, you know, from what I've seen with a lot of the prefab stuff, they'll send them out in panels and you can assemble them and, you know, it, I don't, there's so much option out there for that. The fact that they're allowing the four hundred square foot, that's all I was concerned with, is if somebody didn't want a seven hundred square foot, would they be allowed to do it? And then I realized I was mixing my specs, so I apologize.
Okay.
So.
Because I, my advocacy is still that the restrictions that are in place, like the seven hundred and twenty, is ignoring the recommendation of the state, which has said they prefer and recommend eight to nine hundred square feet. They didn't mandate it, but that's what they recommended.
Thank you, Grover. I, I think we definitely heard that point. I'm sure we're going to have a discussion about that as we move forward. I think there's, your points have resonated well with the commission. Are there any, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify tonight? Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing and, uh, move on to, uh, discussion with the commission. So I would propose that, uh, why don't we, we split this up into kind of two segments for discussion purposes? The first one being the Senate Bill ten fifty-one, House Bill four thirty-one with regard to the urban growth boundary. Maybe we can talk about the tiny home situation and when we're done with that, we can take up the, uh, the older, uh, older houses provisions. Does that make sense to the commission? So why don't we, why don't we just do, um, we've only got five of us. So why don't we start at one end and just kind of let everyone kind of, kind of say where we're at and identify. The only major problem that I heard or significant concern that came up was the tiny home stuff. I just want to make sure that that's correct, so.
Could I just, a point of order to staff to ask a question? With the issue of living in one home and having an ADU to rent it out, did that qualify to the historic as well, that same rule?
Um, right now, because the accessory historic dwellings are not allowed, the owner occupancy condition isn't there and we're not proposing that it be put there.
So that, that, that separates over both of them too. All right.
Mike, do you mind starting?
Okay, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the, um, limitation on the manufactured homes, uh, from seven hundred to seven hundred and twenty. I believe it should be larger. I really think that the, uh, the, 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 the upper limit there should be larger. And as the gentleman said, uh, to, to, to meet the intent of the legislature. And I'm also in agreement that it should be smaller too for the tiny homes piece of it. And I think that, uh, seven hundred to seven hundred and twenty is just, is not the right number.
Thank you. Mary?
Uh, so, most of staff's recommendations I would support. Um, I'll start with the tiny homes for my comments, though. I do see a distinction where there would be tiny homes manufactured offsite completely and come in and placed on a foundation, um, and those would not be permitted because they are manufactured homes. So they couldn't be smaller than seven hundred square feet. And I do see that as overly limiting, because we are looking to increase housing stock and particularly variety of housing stock. So the more that we can allow, the better. So I think expanding that for the minimum seven hundred to being reduced for accessory manufactured dwellings would be important to include. And then for the rest of this section, I would agree that removing the, um, owner occupancy requirement would be good. And then all my other comments will be on the, the historic dwelling section.
Mark?
So I would like to concur. If staff does not believe they're prepared to deal with the prefab dropped onsite, I don't know enough to, to second-guess you, but I think that there is a huge, basically, housing is exceeding inflation. That is solely because there is not enough supply for what demand has become. The only solution to reduce that is just more of all types of housing within reason. And I've never, never in my life have I've seen anybody, when you talk about the equity, there is no equity. Everyone's angry every direction and we have a duty to basically backfill the twenty-year supply that is not there. So, you know, I'd, I'd urge you to just get as flexible as you possibly can and in two years, come back and review it and set it so that when the crisis is kind of alleviated with a bunch of twenty-story buildings, we can come back and look at Clackamas County and take care of, you know what I mean, where that's going. So that, that's where I'd advise it. I'd go nine hundred square feet because that's a pretty good-sized, small home. And I would take it down to three ninety-nine because that was where I understood tiny homes were, three hundred ninety-nine square feet typically. You know, was the, the magic number because the thing I saw on TV was Texas, if you're under four hundred square feet, you don't pay property taxes. Or it was some denominator and that's where it came from, was that boom. So.
And I actually agree that the more flexibility, the better. If there is, like, health, safety benefit to this, I understand that we do some stuff along here that is non-conforming and causes you guys to have to follow kind of down a rabbit hole to, at some point, align things again. But as far as I'm concerned, if we're going to allow additional housing stock to be built and we're encouraging accessory dwelling units, just the more flexibility, the better broadly. So I'm good.
Thank you, guys. Let me ask one quick question. Um, so I heard some numbers, four hundred minimum, nine hundred on the other side. I'm looking for a reaction from staff. If that, if we went in that direction, does that cause any heartburn for any reason?
Well, a couple of things that I can think of off the top of my head are that manufactured homes as primary dwellings in the rural residential zones inside the urban growth boundary can only be seven hundred square feet. If you want to have a manufactured dwelling as a primary dwelling today in those zones, it can only be, uh, it has to be at least seven hundred square feet. I'm sorry.
Is there a maximum on that?
There's no maximum. So, uh, if you, uh, want to set a maximum, uh, maybe you don't want to allow a manufactured dwelling that's an accessory dwelling that ends up being larger than the primary dwelling.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
One quick comment. So, because you're a fresh face, that area, former Damascus.
Yeah.
So on the planning commission, that was the number one thing people asked for is I want to grow old on my property, let my kids live next to me ADU. So it was highly, highly sought after. I may be wrong, but I believe we were twelve hundred as our spec in three of four plans. Because we had four plans in, like, three and a half years. So-
Hundred, I'm sorry, twelve hundred one?
Twelve hundred square feet was where it came through and a number was where they went for that and there was-
A max?
For max. And I, I don't necessarily think that's the number. I'm just sharing history. There was a lot of interest in that. Of course, there are people who were angry there'd be slum lords. So from that whole history of testimony, this effect, if you go back, there's a real concern about someone building a bunch, like subdividing a bunch of two-acre lots and, you know. So the rental requirement, I think, though I don't really care, I know in that community, boy, that's a hot issue and I'd, I would think that you'd want a owner occupied if you're renting an ADU, would be something that community wanted from historic, very heated planning processes. So just to share.
Uh, and if I could add, uh, Chair, just to that thought. So one, uh, suggestion might be that if you want to allow a maximum square footage that's more than seven hundred and twenty square feet for a, uh, manufactured dwelling, that you include a provision that says, but still no larger in square footage than the primary dwelling. Um, if there's a concern about an ADU being larger than the primary dwelling. But right now, uh, again, we have that seven hundred square foot, uh, minimum for primary dwellings. And, uh, I don't know if you think that that's too small and that should be changed as well.
Would, would this allow somebody with, like, an old single wide or whatever to build the house and make the single wide an ADU? Like, like, can you do that reverse that if you'd allow?
If it, if it meets the standard.
Because I think that's your bigger issue right there is these properties with an old trailer and it's hard to, hard to finance.
Can I, can I throw something? Can I jump in here? So it sounds like we need to have a conversation with the folks in building codes to clarify the tiny home issue because my understanding, and I could be wrong, my understanding has always been that they're either RVs or they're, they need to meet, um, building codes as a stick-built, understanding that some of it's being brought in. I don't, I didn't, I don't know if there's, like, a third category where they actually are considered manufactured dwellings and have to meet manufactured dwelling codes because those are different building codes. So if that is indeed the case, then I think we should think about, if it's a stick-built home, there's no minimum for an accessory dwelling. It's intended to be small. I mean, maybe the appropriate thing is to have no minimum for manufactured and let building codes dictate what that minimum is. I don't know what that minimum is. There may be a size. The seven hundred square feet might be as small as they go in far, as far as considering, um, a manufactured dwelling. I, I just don't know what it is. There's, there's sort of three different types of dwellings in my understanding. So we're not allowing RVs. I mean, that, we, we understand that. And a stick-built ADU can be as, as small as building codes will allow it. If they'll allow a two hundred square foot ADU, then we would allow it under our code. So I guess if it's a building code issue and it's considered a manufactured dwelling and it's that size and it's being built or placed with the appropriate permits and it's not on wheels, I, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't consider that. And so maybe the solution is to not have a minimum size to the extent that they even exist, that manufactured homes even exist that small, I don't know because they do still have to meet building codes. I don't know. I'm looking at the planning director to see if that, um, seems reasonable because I don't know that we can throw a number out there for you. I mean, we can't throw a number and I don't know if anyone in this room can.
Mr. McAllister.
Mike McAllister, planning director. So I think maybe the way to frame this is using the word tiny homes is very confusing. Because tiny homes are usually one of three or four different things. They're a recreational vehicle, they're a modular home, it could be a manufactured home, and they could be none of the above. They're built, they aren't permitted as an RV, they aren't inspected as RV, they aren't permitted as a modular building or a manufactured home. There are tiny homes that are just being constructed and they meet no regulation. Okay? So I, so I just caution everybody about using that word tiny homes because it brings in all those structures and things we're hearing. And one, that's not a land use issue, whether the structure is a tiny home or, you know, what, what you're calling that, it's really not a land use issue. I think Commissioner Phillips sort of characterized it right. You have structures that are RVs, you have structures that are modular buildings, which are different than manufactured homes, which are different than a stick-built structure. Okay? And so I just caution you using the word tiny homes because it doesn't mean anything in the context of building codes and land use codes. The issue here is any ADU has to meet building code for qualifying as a single-family residence. It has kitchen facilities, cooking facilities, bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera. So if you build something that meets the state building code for a manufactured home, a modular home, or a stick-built structure- a modular home, or a stick-built structure, it can qualify as an ADU. I don't remember in all of my years, because there's this reference to 700 square feet as a minimum size for a manufactured home in the rural areas. I don't remember in all my years, somebody coming in with one smaller than that. I don't remember. Usually if it was, it was an RV or it was something that wasn't licensed. I don't know that they even, and we can certainly look at that. I don't know that they're even built smaller than that as a manufactured home.
When you Google, why is a manufactured home 720 square feet or whatever it was? I Googled it. It popped up. There's an Oregon doc on it and it says 1976.
Right.
There were no laws. They create them. That's the standard. And it just came from, and it's probably a model code, I'd bet.
Maybe. And that's what our definition refers to is it's something built after 1976 and has, and is designed to be, to be traveled on the road and have sleeping quarters, living quarters, kitchens, et cetera. That's what the county zoning order says. So just something to consider. And then the other question is, where did the 700 square feet come originally? No idea. Again, I think it was in the mid-'70s. The standard used to be, you know, the 720 square feet for ADUs right now. The standard used to be 720 square feet or a...
25% of the floor area of the primary dwelling?
Right. So we basically said it was 720 square feet or 20, a percentage of the original, of the main house. And that was a, that was an attempt to make sure that the ADU was accessory and incidental and smaller than the main house. And we got rid of the 20, I mean, we deleted the 25% and it said, let's just make it 700 square feet. Can you make it bigger, 800ish? You could do that. I don't know, you know, but I don't know any more rhyme or reason that 800 is better than 700 or 900. So I just don't have the context for why that number was originally chosen, other than the idea was to make sure that it's incidental and accessory to the primary dwelling. And you, particularly in the urban area, we have a lot of pretty small, you know, 800 or 900-square-foot houses out there that have been there for a long time. And the idea was to keep it smaller and incidental to those primary dwellings. So.
So, good history lesson.
Yeah.
The consensus I'm hearing from the commission is that we would like to allow ADUs that are, that are smaller than that 700 square feet. And I think everyone would agree, as long as they meet those building code requirements. Do you have a suggestion for us about how the best way to make that happen? Is it Martha's eliminate the minimum altogether? Is there some other, something else that staff would suggest?
So there's no minimum? Is that what you're asking?
Minimums for the manufactured dwellings.
For the manufactured?
They're not stopping anybody from small living.
I would say that as, it's going to have to meet building codes one way or another. So I would recommend that we just don't have a minimum size for an accessory manufactured dwelling.
Okay. The other thing to consider is, you could forward those recommendations. The other thing you consider is we could research that between now and the board and sort of say, is there a standard, a minimum standard or whatever? And we could look at that or incorporate, if that works, we could incorporate that in a recommendation.
And I also think the maximum for that same thing could stand to be closer to what Glenn mentioned, which was it just has to be smaller than the primary or something like that. I just think more flexibility there. And I understand the concern about the character that it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit and needs to remain to be so. But I would just say more flexibility.
Also point out, if you give more square footage, it'll make it easier to finance it because, you know, your cost in square footage, they finance based on square footage. So if you're at 700, you know, you add 200 feet, it costs very little to add that extra. But the ability to finance that would probably go way up.
Can I just throw in there that it's clear to me how we could limit the size of a manufactured home ADU, limiting the maximum square footage to no more than the primary dwelling, except when that primary dwelling is a stick-built. What if the stick-built is 3,000 square feet?
So I do think we should still have a maximum size for the ADUs. It sounds like, from what the other commissioners are saying, we're interested in it being a little more than 720. If the state with the Senate bill was recommending 800 to 900, maybe we should be looking in that range.
So I guess, I think the document that he's referencing is DLCD's guidance document. And it had, I believe, an 800-square-foot number in there, although I don't know that it was, again, it seems like it was a number that seemed reasonable to everybody. When you look at the sizes of ADUs allowed throughout the Portland metropolitan region, most of them are between 720 and 800 square feet. There's very few jurisdictions that go larger than that. So it just seems like the standard. I don't know what evidence there is behind any of the particular numbers. But it is, it's intended to be incidental and smaller than your primary dwelling.
I do have one more question on the manufactured dwellings for staff, if I may. Under the manufactured dwelling codes, 824.03, standards for manufactured homes to be used as a permanent dwelling located on individual lots in the urban area. Number D says an enclosed garage or carport shall be provided with at least 250 feet of floor area. Would that, if you have a manufactured accessory dwelling, would that provision still apply? Would that, would you need to have a garage with your manufactured accessory dwelling as well?
So as it reads now, that the answer would be yes. And Mike can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is the next package that's coming before you with the ZDO audit is looking at Section 825, 824? It's 824, isn't it? And a lot of those, a lot of those criteria or regulations in there are going to be removed because they're regulated through the building code anyway. And I believe that is one of the things that is going to be removed, isn't it? I could be wrong. I can check into that. The intent was not that that had to apply. But do you know if that's going to be removed, Mike?
I think it is.
Okay.
So I think we should try and wrap up this mandatory ADU section before we move on to the historic homes. Does anyone want to put a motion on the table based on our discussion?
For just this portion or do we want a motion altogether?
I think, I think it might be easier just to move it as two separate and then we'll, does that make sense to staff?
I think that makes sense.
Let's get Lisa Straw poll on the one and then we can move the whole ZDO proposal.
Where are we at?
Does it sound like we're looking at for the manufactured accessory dwellings, no minimum, and increasing manufactured for, ours, not manufactured, increasing the maximum size for all to maybe 800, since that's what staff was saying was the largest in the area?
I'd propose 900 square feet.
Is that where Estacada's is?
DLCD was recommending 800?
I, I remember seeing, a range is what they recommended for more. But I was just looking for it and I couldn't see it.
Staff was saying that for the area, 720 to 800 was what was most jurisdictions were using.
I want to show Estacada who's boss. 900.
Where was Estacada landing? Where did you say?
I'm kidding. I have no concern at all.
I am curious because you mentioned it, right?
Sure. I don't, I hope that all of Clackamas County's policies don't just center on what Estacada's doing. But Estacada chose to limit ADUs to 900 square feet, except if the ADU is the converted basement of the dwelling, in which case it could be as much as 1,100 square feet.
I think we did hear some public testimony and we, and we got more of it in the packet today on our desk. So there was some concern for the impact of potential number of new structures and the intent of accessory dwellings are to remain accessory subordinate to the, to the primary. So I don't know where, how we want to deal with the number. We do want to allow a...
I would actually like to hear more about this footprint basement thing. The 1,100, just because that's what you'd expect the basement to be or why would it be bigger?
There was some, a lot of back and forth discussion and they just settled on 1,100 square feet.
It's just a random number.
Yeah. I hate to say random because there was so much discussion, but...
So how do, how do you stop them from living in the additional portion that doesn't have a bathroom directly attached to it?
We'd make them install a partition wall to close off the balance. And access to that balance could not be through the ADU itself.
Would, would staff have a problem with allowing for, unless it's in the basement, then it'd be the reasonable footprint? Is that a thing or would that cause heartburn for staff that there might be a 1,500-square-foot basement ADU?
Well, at any time that we're establishing different standards for different dwellings in different zones is going to create a burden. And I do want to throw out there that right now, this proposal is only addressing the dimensions of ADUs in these specific zones, whereas there hasn't been discussion about increasing the maximum square footage to where we allow ADUs right now. And so if we have different standards, different maximums throughout the county...
Isn't that the purpose of zones is different standards, different maximums? I mean, that's literally what a zone is, so. Does, what do people think about, because I didn't even think about that, but the idea of putting a partition in a basement randomly at a random square footage seems a little ridiculous to me. Does that bother anybody else here? I've got like a 1,400 square foot and I have to create this weird closet that doesn't really need to exist because 1,100 is the number?
We do this for accessory dwellings right now. Require unused space to be walled off when an accessory dwelling unit is attached.
Just, just to meet the number requirement?
Somebody has an existing structure and they want to create an attached ADU within it and that space is more than 720 square feet. One option they have, and plenty of people take advantage of it, is to put in that partition wall.
There's also the consideration for new construction. So if you come in with a McMansion, you can have a McMansion basement intentionally built and have a much larger ADU than would be allowed on a property that has a detached ADU or an existing basement.
You'd be planning to come back for that's what you're saying? Or you'd even be able to build it that way?
If it were new, you would build it that way and you could have a substantially sized basement that's...
All right. We're overcomplicating it. Let's go with one number.
I think we need to allow some flexibility here. And I think 900 is, is a good number.
Well, it's an actual livable space if somebody has kids.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I, I move, we accept the staff-proposed ZDO 269, the, the ADU portion of that with the amendment of moving the square footage allowance to 900 square feet for an ADU, but not to exceed the existing property as staff recommended, that the existing...
Primary residence.
Primary residence. Does that language work?
Works for me.
Are you going to include removing the minimum for the manufactured?
And removing the minimum for the manufactured, yes.
Do you have that, Darcy?
No.
Can you restate that one more time for Darcy?
I'm going to start over. And if I have to diagram it on paper, we'll do that. But so we're seeking, so I move that we amend ZDO-269, accessory dwelling units as recommended by staff with, with several small changes. We are going to increase the size of the ADU to be allowed up to 900 square feet. We are going to remove the size limits on manufactured dwellings. And we would, the minimums, excuse me, on manufactured dwellings. And we will, the third one was...
Acquire that the...
That the primary residence be, that the ADU must be no bigger than the primary residence so that it doesn't distract from the character of that.
Your second?
Can I ask a clarification? On removing the minimum size for the manufactured dwelling, you meant the manufactured accessory dwelling, correct?
I was thinking of manufactured dwellings throughout the county being that there's an arbitrary rule. That's what I thought you wanted. But it, why would you have ADUs and not for manufactured, being that we have a state rule and you're preparing yourself in case the state rule goes away, right?
So the...
We're in discussion, right? Yeah.
We need a second.
Do we need a second before we discuss the motion?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. So moved by Mark, seconded by Mike. Now let's move into discussion.
Now discussion of the motion?
So, because my, my impression now is what you wanted by code was why do we have this arbitrary number when it could go away, then we'd have to come back? You know, you'd just be, that's what you were seeking, right?
So the distinction was I was seeking it for the manufactured accessory dwelling only to allow for smaller, since it is accessory. I had not intended for the discussion to expand beyond that because, again, this, we were just looking at ADUs in this.
And we're only talking about ZDO 269 accessory dwelling units? So that's where we're at right now in this accessory.
So I guess based on that, yes, it would only affect the ADU if it happened to be a trailer. There wouldn't, or a manufactured dwelling, excuse me. That would only affect this portion of the ZDO. Did that answer the question?
So are we...
I need to write this stuff down before I make a motion.
So are we agreeing that we intend the minimum to be removed for the accessory manufactured dwelling only?
Yes, within AD, ZDO 269.
Okay. So point of order, do I need to make a motion to amend the motion then?
You're going to accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion, right?
Yeah.
You're clarifying your motion. Mike, do you agree with that clarification? Darcy, do you have that clarification?
Can someone restate the motion so I know it has been seconded and what we're voting on? Someone will do that.
Let's go ahead and have you restate the motion for Darcy's sake one more time.
So I'm going to restate this motion that the three elements of the motion. The first element of the motion is to adopt ZDO-269, accessory dwelling units as recommended by staff with three adjustments. The first adjustment is that we would increase the ADU size limit to 900 square feet. The second amendment will be that we amend for the purposes of accessory dwelling units, manufactured homes will have no limit on minimum size. And the third was that the existing primary residents would not be smaller than the ADU. The ADU must be smaller than the primary residents to keep with the character of the existing home.
You're still willing to second that? Darcy, do you have that okay now?
Okay.
Did that make more sense?
Did.
Question from staff.
Just a question of clarification. Is this proposed change in the maximum square footage only to apply to those zones where ADUs are, would be newly allowed by ZDO 269 or all ADUs in all zones?
All, all ADUs? And, and this, as recommended by staff, also restricts rentals. You have to actually live on the property to rent an ADU or a property, right?
No, they take away owner occupancy.
So staff's recommendation was to remove the owner occupancy requirement?
Yeah, it's, it's gone.
All right. Everybody okay with that? Because I know that Damascus would be kind of annoyed by that.
I'm good with that.
I think you got to roll the dice.
I will.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Call a question? Seeing none, the question's been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. I think we can move on to the historic dwelling section, which I'm sure will be equally spirited. Why don't we do the same thing really quick? Why don't we just do a round robin? People can kind of say where they are and then if someone wants to offer a motion, they can. Mike?
I have no comments on the historic piece of this.
Mary? Do you want to come back to you?
I'm trying to find my notes in the code. Yeah, come back to me.
Mark or Christine? Who wants to start? Thoughts, comments on the historic dwelling section?
My only concern is the testimony we had and, you know what I mean? I assume there's definitely a process before. You've got to prove you got water, you've got adequate septic. All that's definitely cleared. So her concerns that it's taxing, all right. That was my only concern. I have no concern as it's written.
So my, my only kind of response to this was, again, we're adding housing stock. That's fantastic. We're adding flexibility to people who have larger lots, two acres. I mean, there's a lot about this that makes good sense. I think you acknowledged kind of that it appears to be the theme of the night. It's a little arbitrary, the date range, 1945 cutoff. I do not quite understand that. I don't know in Clackamas County how responsive that is. I think when you talk about, Mark said, there's no equity. Everybody's unhappy in some way, shape, or form. That's the nature of zoning. It seems to me that to, for this to actually be beneficial, it might take some time to know how much people are actually going to take advantage of it. But I would definitely want to allow people, again, the opportunity to be able to use this to the best advantage for their own situations, you know, to not have to live there if they want to, to rent both, to really take full... If they want to, to rent both, to really take full advantage of the fact that we're creating more housing stock.
Mary?
Okay. So, I definitely support staff's proposal for this. I just wanna make some comments about it. I think it is important, it adds some more options for increasing housing stock, which is important. It does help encourage the preservation of older structures and inclusive with that historic and eligible structures. That being said, I think not part of this ZDO, but I think it is important to look at the potential impacts that that could have, those new buildings could have on a historic site. I think that's beyond this proposal. But I think it does need to be looked at because new structures on a site where you have a significant resource, whether it's designated or not, can still impact the significance of that resource. So, if the historic nature of the property is its relationship on its site to a certain resource, say it was developed along the railway and its relationship to the railway is important. And then a new structure comes in between that and the railway, we could significantly detract from this historic significance of the property. So, I think that's important to look at. I don't know what may be part of the audit when you're looking at the historic section. I don't know. But it, that's just an important consideration to keep in mind. Where that comes into play, I don't know. But hopefully, it can on a later project.
Can I respond to that too? I have the exact opposite perspective on that. And that I'd wanna defend property rights and property owners. It's their choice if they choose to go seek historic designation. And at that point, then there's all kinds of requirements and mandates on them for that property. And I wouldn't think that I would want to prospectively look at them and say, I, I, you haven't chosen this designation, but I also somewhat arbitrarily find this to be historically significant. So, therefore, we're gonna give you different rules for how your ADU might be placed on your property. So, I would say that that causes considerable concern to look at a property that hasn't chosen to be designated and apply different rules to them than proper. I can see it for properties that are designated, of course. But properties that where the owners have not chosen to seek historic property designation, I just, I, I don't think that would be necessarily appropriate.
And just to clarify, I wasn't necessarily indicating it needed additional regulations, but that it was an issue that could come up that might need to be looked at.
I just don't know how you'd look at it. Like, that just seems pretty vague to me without creating some regulations around it that might limit what they could do.
The designation of historic here was just based upon a date. That, that house could not be of any significance other than it was built sometime between eighteen fifty and nineteen forty six. I mean, if it was the residence of a governor or something back in eighteen sixty, well, maybe that makes it something historic and significant. But just having the structure there from eighteen sixty doesn't mean, to me at least, that it's got a significant historic value.
Yeah, I don't think this was named very well because it's based on age only, not historic significance. Historic significance has more than just age.
My, my first house was built in nineteen ten. And the day it's torn down to build four stories in Selwood, I will send that guy a bottle of whiskey. I hate that house so much. How the age and historic significance, you know, there's only so much lipstick you can put on a pig. You know, I mean, they were built by the first owners. They were shipped out on a kit by Sears, most of them. I mean, it, the, the architecture is neat, but it isn't, it, it isn't like a, a, it, it isn't like an antique worth restoring. A lot of them were put together by people who were cutting a lot of corners and it just.
My first home was built in nineteen thirty seven and I could not agree with you more. I could, could, couldn't be happier to be rid of that home.
Age does not make significance.
So, I, I will just, from my perspective, I, I really hate these take it or leave it type stuff. It really frustrates me. But I, I think on, on the whole, the impact is fairly limited. And I think it does more good than, than harm. So, I'm certainly supportive of it. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the code change generated by HB three zero one two, which would allow for the creation of a new residence. If a house was built between eighteen fifty and nineteen forty five, they can create an accessory dwelling unit. Or they can create a new house and maintain the old house as an accessory historic dwelling unit. Does that make sense?
And with that, I assume you're, you're concurring with the adoption of the staff proposal.
I, I concur completely with the adoption of the staff proposal as written.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's no need to repass the whole ZDO, those two.
But there's one more section of it. There's one more piece of the proposal.
What am I missing?
Well, it's, it's part of the first one, but it wasn't mandated. And it was an option that we provided to you to allow accessory dwelling units in the MRR zone. And also to subject accessory dwelling units that are currently allowed without standards, but to subject ADUs in the HR zone to the standards in section eight thirty nine, which my understanding, your previous motion was to make that a maximum of nine hundred square feet instead of seven hundred and twenty across the board, correct?
Not to exceed.
Yes.
The size of the primary dwelling.
Right.
And is that proposal, I assume it's prospectively from here on out? So, everything that's there now for the MMR, where are we? Allow ADs, are they not allowed at all right now?
They are not.
Okay. That's brand new for them.
Use in the HR zone that may be more than.
Okay.
Nine hundred square feet could continue to be so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, did we have any concerns with those?
I'm not seeing any. If someone wants to make a motion, then we can have some discussion as there's all that.
It's your night, Mark.
You're on a roll.
It's tonight.
See if I remember it. Yeah, there we go. I move that we accept staff's recommendations to allow ADUs at nine hundred square feet. How would I phrase this? Let me back up. We have two zones, HR and MRR, that are gonna be adjusted. So, I would move that staff allow ADUs in the HR and MRR zone. Is there any adjustment beyond that, given that, you know, you'd basically be nonconforming if you're over that size with an ADU? If you're below that size, I mean, it's what it is.
Yeah. And staff is recommending not only to allow these in the MRR, but also to subject ADUs in both the HR and the MRR to whatever standards we come up with in ZDO, uh, in section eight thirty nine.
Okay. So, eight thirty nine or two six nine?
Eight thirty nine.
Yeah, in section eight thirty nine of the ZDO. Yeah.
Long day. All right. So, just to amend that.
Eight thirty nine.
We're, we're seeking to expand the ADU zoning into HR and MRR zones. And we are seeking to apply, you know, whatever standards are created in eight thirty nine to those zones as well. Correct? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got that okay, Darcy? Any discussion?
Just to clarify, that's per the staff's recommendation.
Per the staff's recommendation, deferring to staff's interpretation of said motion.
Any further discussion? I'm not seeing any.
I just wanna confirm, you guys didn't get anything, that there was no public comment on that particular section from anybody?
No, the only public, written public comment that we've had is just that one.
Okay, thank you.
And you came early on this too. I remember seeing this a ways ago, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty surprising.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
There's five of us here. Everything has to pass with five votes?
No, we, we have a quorum of five, so we would need at least three votes for a motion.
I thought the, the, said he had to have five votes.
You have to have five votes.
We have to have fi, we have to have a, at least, so the votes have to be, you've got the bylaws in front of it. So, our votes apparently need to be a quorum of the entire commission.
Right now, until we get nine members, then we could have some.
It could be, it would still need five, five votes to pass.
It's about the total membership.
Okay, well, that, that was good clarification because I was just operating off of the, we just needed a majority of a quorum. Trying to find my agenda. Are there any other items that we need to address? We have a schedule review. The next meeting's on the July twenty third. Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, do you, the planning commission agenda is there before you. Only other businesses, the Board of Commissioners did follow-up interviews for planning commission members. Understand that there are, uh, discussion on it issues tomorrow. So, I'm hoping to find out who the new planning commission members are. And I will, we'll let you know accordingly. And.
Mike, can I ask a question about that? Will, will we be at full complement once that is decided? Have they, they have enough applications and enough interviews that it'll fill out the commission?
Yeah, the idea is that all the positions will be filled.
Thank you.
Is there gonna be any staggering of the membership? Because we could lose four all of a sudden or lose.
They're appointed for the existing terms, right?
Yeah, so, so, besides the five of you, Commissioner Peterson is on the commission. And then there was two vacancies for this term that expired. And then the additional vacancy as a result of Commissioner Holmes resigning. And so, what will happen is two of the commissioners will be appointed to full, four full year terms. And another commissioner will be appointed to fill Gail Holmes. And so, the way the appointments, positions are set up, there's three, the, the terms expire, four year terms, and they expire on rotating basis. So, yeah, does that answer your question? Yeah, can we get a list of when each of us is gonna expire? Sure. Yes.
It's also on the website, if I remember right. I think that, I think the dates.
On the website?
I think the dates are on the website, if I remember right.
Scroll down to the bottom.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not easy to find, but it's there.
Yep. The only other, the only other comment, just ongoing things is the planning director recruitment is ongoing. The position closes tonight at eleven o'clock. And our plan is to pursue interviews in the next two or three weeks. So, we'll keep you apprised of that. That's all I have.
You? Anything else? I think we are adjourned.
Okay.